Do you want to do a pledge of allegiance, please? Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
That's the last?
Sure, let's pray. Heavenly Father, we bow before you this evening and we just thank you for the gift of life and the privilege of living in America. And we just lift our country before you, asking for your favor but our leadership at the national level and, Lord, that you'd protect us with all the shootings that are going on, that you would turn our hearts to you. And we thank you for these local leaders, for our mayor, for the trustees, for the staff, for volunteers, for people in the community. And we just invite your blessing into this time together tonight. We pray for your favor. We pray for your wisdom. We thank you for these leaders that give themselves to make our community a better place. So we invite your presence into this meeting tonight, that you would just grant each person here a sense of guidance that would, decisions would be made to honor you and, Lord, it would prosper the people of this community. We pray all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, everyone. Good evening, everyone. This will get started. First thing is public input. Does anyone have anything they want to speak or ask, and they give you a permit to have the floor? Just give your name and address, please, and we appreciate it.
Um, we're here for a sidewalk issue.
Okay.
Is that now, or?
I need your name and, you know.
Lisa Hull, H-U-L-L-S-E, 27 Mead Street.
Okay.
And we've, the sidewalk is settled and it's, um, uneven. We talked to Butch about it. He's on board.
Doing the fifty-fifty thing?
Yep.
Okay.
But we got pictures of it. You guys want to see the pictures?
If you want to show, it's not a problem. You want to, the point of making, we might as well look at it, right?
Yeah, I know. This is my letter for the request.
Okay.
And this is showing the, the end of the driveway. It gets about five inches of ice in the winter, and then when we have rain, it's just a massive mud puddle. Now it's running up the sidewalk the other way. But you can see here, uh, last year, not this past year, the year before, it cost me a hundred and fifty dollars in rock salt for that area. I can't keep it.
Yeah, no, for what?
Yeah.
Let me show it to the other guy. Have him look at it. Thank you.
Look, rock salt, those pictures, they just bounce, it free freezes it.
Yeah, no, yeah, right.
I can't keep it clean.
Yeah, end ruins concrete.
Yeah, it does.
That's a lot of work.
It doesn't really matter if it's a big rain or a little rain. It's all just full.
Guess we can make a motion now? I make the motion that we allow, um, participation in the fifty-fifty program.
Second. All favor? Aye. Okay. Okay, Butch will work with you on it.
All right, now you just keep talking to Butch?
Yeah, yeah, he'll take care of it.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming and bringing our attention. Right.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Have a nice night.
Anyone else like to have the floor?
I'm on the agenda.
You can go now.
You can go, go ahead.
Oh, all righty.
Then you don't have to wait.
Well, um, so I have everything to, for the pavilion to be built at the pool. So, there's the plans here. I think Josh already has the permit, but there's the drawing and there's everything. And then here's her certificate of existence and the liability insurance. So, you want all that? And so that's that, and I've been in touch with Brian and-
Yeah, Brian says to me that you've got to put it now behind, behind the kiddie pool and that play area. Right, oh, yeah.
Nice area.
Yeah, that is nice.
It's a better area, probably a better area over there.
Lot better.
Yeah.
Shady up there.
And that's where all the kids eat, back there by the kiddie pool. And then just to let you know that I've put in for a sub, weekend supervisor, I guess.
You're on my agenda for that one.
Okay, don't need to talk about that. And the swimming lessons, the volunteer?
Yep, I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk about that.
Okay.
That's it, okay.
That's it, then.
Thank you. Anyone else like?
Are you going to allow the pavilion to be built at the property?
We didn't, I thought we already approved it. Oh, okay.
We were waiting for drawings and stuff and that was-
Oh, okay. All right, so then we need a motion.
I move that we allow the pavilion to be built. Second.
All favor? Aye. Post. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I know we've been talking about it since last year, it's just sometimes you slip your mind and you didn't approve it. Anyone else like to speak out and have a minute? If not, then, okay, we'll go. Item number two of the abstracts, I hope everybody had a chance to take a look at them. We need the motion to approve them.
Make a motion to approve the abstract.
Second. All favor?
Aye.
Post.
Who did that, Eric?
Eric seconded it.
Eric.
Yeah?
Yeah, you got that.
Close, close tie.
All right, department heads. Shane?
Good evening, everybody. Get my report?
Yes, sir.
Um, everything seems to be working well over there. We added some sand to one of the sand filters last week and cleaning that up and that went pretty smooth. And we had a New York City DEP quarterly inspection and that went well, too. And that's all I have for tonight.
That's wonderful.
That's good, nobody's spent, that's a good one.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
We're gonna ask for that other, you mentioned something down there.
Uh, no, for, uh, next month and I gotta go. Yeah, we had a pump break this morning and we're trying to get some prices for that.
Oh, okay, good enough.
That was just, that's the price, it was just a quote.
Get some quotes, yes.
You gotta get some quotes, yeah. Okay, Butch?
Evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Everybody got my report?
Yep.
I don't have a whole lot on there, nothing spectacular, and I don't have any dashboard either.
That's good.
That's right.
When do you go to training?
That's Thursday this week, the water class.
Edumicated?
Sure.
Running some barrels around?
We have moved a few, though, yeah. Just a couple of them.
There was five, I think we had to move. We had one request to move.
One of them was mine.
One of them was yours, I don't-
They needed it somewhere else.
Yeah.
I had another one.
I guess they're gonna have a, um, a contest on the barrels, on who does the follow, so that's why they did it. Any other questions for Butch?
Did you move your rock?
The big rock?
Contractor has not been in touch with me.
That's a big rock.
Yep.
All right, thank you, sir. Josh is not here for the code, so we all had a chance to look at that. Bill Brown, fellow engineering.
Just a couple, I guess, things to touch base on. On the INI study, and we talked about that last month, we're just finalizing the report there, uh, to kind of, um, work through O and M budgets currently and then ongoing, see if there's other outside funding. The mayor's been in touch with a few different avenues of kind of beating the drum. On the water side of things, uh, we did, um, been ongoing for a while, but the proposed project, upgrade the water system. We had bids come in last week, uh, had four bids that were received. Uh, the lowest was from Rutledge Excavating in Equinox, PA, um, to the tune of just under two-point-four million dollars. Uh, was a little above our projected budget for the project. The last two years of inflation haven't helped, uh, construction budgets too awful much. So, I am, uh, reaching out to, um, the village attorney to see what options we may have as far as potentially awarding the project and reducing the scope to some degree to stay within budget, um, or we may need to rebid the project as a smaller scope. So I wanna make sure we're following the right rules, um, so reaching out to, uh, Mr. Merzick to, uh, correlate that. So our, our, our total project cost, um, when we kind of kicked all this off, we're looking at a two-million-dollar project cost. One-point-two million of that is a grant from the state, and then there is an eight-hundred-thousand-dollar loan, um, that'll be a thirty-year loan through New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation. We could potentially get more loan funds, um, to cover the exceedance and, and do, uh, the full project, um, but that would be then more, more loan funds on top of debt you guys already had, so that probably presents more of a challenge. So we're kind of looking at options to scale things back a little bit and see, uh, what we may be able to do with the budgets that we have available. So that's, that's our, our big activity. Uh, if we get some determination, we may request a special board meeting over the next couple of weeks, um, depending on the feedback from, uh, Mr. Merzick.
What's the timeframe that, uh, that money needs to be suspended?
It's a five-year term. That's twenty-one or twenty-two we closed, or three, twenty-six or twenty-seven. So we-
So we have time.
We're all right that, that way. Uh, we had put in the bid to have the project done, um, the end of July of next year. The, the main reason for that is the lead time associated with ductile iron water main, uh, the, the pipe, um, that has a thirty-to-fifty-week lead time on it right now. So even if we ordered it today, it'd be a while before we could probably get it in, so that is-
Did you say fifty?
Yeah. It's getting better. I mean, it was over a year, you know, and there's some places we're seeing it come in, you know, on that six-month timeframe and others that it's taken fifty weeks, so, um, that's an ongoing issue and a lot of, you know, lead time on it, parts and pieces and equipment. Ductile iron pipe right now, uh, generators, a lot of different electronics, um, still have very long lead times that are a challenge for different projects. So, we'll kind of retool that and see what we can do to keep moving forward. Nothing, nothing new on the, the Currywell project currently. Um, the parts for that are on order, um, the screen that goes at the bottom of the well casing, um, so that, we anticipate that being drilled over the summer months. And that is really all I had to offer. There is, uh, a long breakdown on all the, the bid pricing, we'll see in there. The low bid was Rutledge Excavating at just under two-point-four. The second bid was Robinson Construction, um, who's out of candor but has done a number of projects locally in Hancock and in Oneonta, um, and they were, uh, just under two-point-five. So, that tells me that that's a pretty, that's, that's what the number is, that's what the cost is, you know, you have to, two, two within a hundred thousand dollars on a, on a two, two-plus-million-dollar project, that's, that's the number. And then, you know, two, two others that are higher, but even those were pretty close together, so, um, that's, that's the cost of that project today versus, you know, two years ago.
Yeah, we were thinking, what, two-point-one, we were hoping for?
Yeah. Yeah, nothing formal to ask for tonight, but, um, hopefully in the next, uh, week or so, we'll, we'll make up for that.
Knowing that the cost of the ask might go up.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, sir. Chief?
Somebody got the report?
Yep.
All right. Um, the only thing I really have to ask for in the board is, uh, Austin Mitchell's looking to go through tactical shotgun training, June sixteenth and seventeenth. It's through Delhi PD, they're gonna waive the tuition costs for it, which can be like, probably a couple hundred dollars in ammunition or something like that, so. It's not gonna interfere with any scheduling that we have right there right now, so, just looking for permission to do that. It's at the range in Delhi.
Motion that we approve, training.
All favor?
Aye.
Post.
I think that's it, I do some things in the-
Is that accepted?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, trustee reports. Go you first, Nate.
Okay. We'll start with a couple of, a couple more hires for the pool. We're hoping to hire Linda Belmont as a substitute pool side, pool supervisor, uh, on July first, and, uh, I'd be starting at fourteen-twenty an hour to, uh, fill in for Brian or Mary when we need a supervisor and they're not available. So, just a here and there. Uh, we'd like to hire Ele Canbell and Aurora Siniscalpi as lifeguards, uh, also starting at the current rate of fourteen-twenty an hour upon completion of lifeguarding courses. Both of them right now still need a lifeguarding course and are planning to attend them soon. But, uh, we'd like to be able to hire them once they've completed, and I'd like to make a motion to make those hires.
Do you have a second?
Uh, second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, okay.
Thank you very much.
No posts. Okay.
Uh, some swim lesson, some swim lesson news. We will do all that we can to give swimming lessons this summer. We've had two people volunteer, uh, one has taught at the Walton Pool and will offer to teach lessons for free. We're looking for more volunteers with swim lesson teaching experience. Uh, this will happen no sooner than mid-July for a two-week program, with the lower levels being the only one taught after that. We'll make a determination if a second session is warranted due to attendance. Last year, we ran into a two, uh, two-week program with roughly ninety-two kids signed up, and the problem was that fewer than thirty finished and met, and many just didn't show up at all. So, in short, we ask if you sign up, please show up, because this is a determining factor into our having the ability to teach swim lessons. Linda Belmont and Allison Clark have volunteered their services to teach lessons, and if more want to volunteer, uh, please stop by the pool or, uh, can give a call to six-oh-seven-eight-six-five-five-zero-zero-three. Basketball and arts and crafts, uh, will begin on July third, not the first, the pool will open on the first. Basketball and open, and arts and crafts will begin on July third. They will run from nine to twelve, uh, Monday through Thursdays for six weeks. And, uh, theater, at, at, at the theater, it's getting, getting a little more quiet now. I apologize, everyone, just a second there. There we are. We've got Spider-Man Theater right now, and, uh, our classic flicks this month is King Kong on June fifteenth at seven PM. King Kong from nineteen thirty-three, so don't miss out on that, it's gonna be cool.
It's original, yeah.
Uh, we also have a film screening at the theater this month of Indian Summer and The Fall of Cannonsville, followed by a Q and A with filmmaker and producer Charles Cadkin. This will happen on Thursday, June twenty-ninth at six-thirty PM at the theater. So, come on out for that, because that's also gonna be really good. And then, one more thing I have is that, um, I'm proposing a small raise for our lifeguards. And I know that we've already made our budget for this year, and we were very concerned with keeping taxes below a certain level to, you know, keep our taxpayers from, uh, being stretched too thin. And it was agreed upon that the simple increase that the, uh, lifeguards had gotten because the minimum wage did increase, so they did get an increase, uh, to fourteen-twenty an hour, which is the current minimum wage. However, that is the current minimum wage, and they're not making any more than that. And since we made the budget, things have changed. We have saved money in places we didn't intend to save money, but it's happened, so there's more money there than there used to be. What I'm, what I'm, uh, proposing is increased to fifteen dollars an hour for our lifeguards. At four lifeguards on duty at a time for sixty-two days, and that's assuming that the pool never closes, every time the pool closes, we save money. It comes to one-thousand-one-hundred-and-ninety dollars and forty cents. Add the weekend supervisor to that for the nine weekends that the pool will be open, that adds an additional eighty-six dollars and forty cents. These aren't large amounts of money. Uh, and then I would like to increase the wage for the head lifeguard to fifty and fifty, and that would add one-hundred-and-seventy dollars to the budget. The total of all of this comes to one-thousand-four-hundred-forty-six dollars and eighty cents. We've already saved far more than that in the budget than we intended to. But I would very much like to make this increase to show our lifeguards that we really do appreciate them and that we'd like them to come back year after year. Our pool is an incredible asset for our community. It's detrimental to economic development and making people want to live here and work here and come here. And it's just something that I, I, I feel bad, it's a personal responsibility of mine that I didn't advocate enough during the budget process. I, I wanted them to get, to, to get raises, but we, we did agree, and I did vote to pass the budget, just like everybody else did. So, so that is absolutely on me. But this is the last chance before summer starts, we can do it. Should there be any budget overruns, we can take it from the general fund and-
Where do you think the money comes from to begin with?
Sorry?
It comes from the general fund. So, how are you gonna take it from the general fund if that's where we're paying it?
Well, we can also take it from a different budget item where we have saved money.
And so where are you proposing?
I spoke to David Merzick.
Where, which line are you proposing to take it from? Because I'm gonna need to know that.
Okay, you wanna be specific?
Yeah.
The police budget. One-thousand-four-hundred-forty-six dollars and eighty-six cents. We are currently saving more than that every single-
When you're finished with your thing, then we'll say the rest. Anything else?
So I'm just making that motion.
Okay, you can make the motion.
If, if, nobody seconds it, then that's as far as it'll go, but I have, I have to do it. So I'm, I'm making a motion to raise lifeguard pay to fifteen dollars an hour, head lifeguard pay to fifty and fifty.
Is there a second?
I just want to say that when you're making budget amendments, it's usually the threshold of an emergency, you have a breakdown, you have a broken piece of equipment or something. I agree, I agree with what you're saying, um, that should be done during the regular budget process to retain lifeguards, you know, if they want to come back next year, you know, putting in that incentive to increase the, the, that's something we should discuss in the next budget, um, but this doesn't meet that threshold of emergency adjustment in my mind. I just wanted to say my piece.
I hear what you're saying, too, and I'm gonna throw, there's been a couple comments that were made, that Colchester is making fifteen dollars an hour. Well, here's Colchester's paper from the reporter, they're not. Some of them are the returning lifeguards to fourteen-seventy, coupled three new other lifeguards to fourteen-twenty. Another thing for point of interest, the minimum wage that the state gives, which is fourteen-twenty, is not a requirement for the municipality. Our requirement is federal law, which is seven-fifty, which we wouldn't do. But with the fourteen-twenty that we gave, they got a fourteen percent raise. I know it doesn't matter so much the money, it's the percentage that they got, too. The DPW, people like, people like that got two and a half, two, two-point-seven, but that's another reason why. Should we bring up at the next budget hearing that returning lifeguards will make more than someone that's working there? I agree with you, but we should have done that in the budget process. My feeling is we should have done it in the budget process, but it wasn't done. So that's just all I have to say on it. You don't want to say anything, no?
No, I, I would just point out that, as the clerk pointed out, once the budget is set, each area in the budget is allocated a certain amount of funds. And as you pointed out, the only way to move funds from one allocation to another would be to take it out of somebody else's. Unfortunately, at the end of the year, particularly the police budget, because part of that is overtime spending, which we don't really have an awful lot of control over. So it may look like there's money left over, but you really don't know that it's there until the end of the year. Unfortunately, this is the beginning of the process, it doesn't end the end, so there's no place to move it from.
Okay.
That's all I have, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Eric, you got anything to say?
Several things. Uh, so the Ms. Vassler faculty member from Walton Central came to us about the hydrant painting. And I, I put her in contact with members of the Lions Club, and she was able to graciously receive funding for that project. Also, uh, Bob Biddy over at Renmast is gonna help with that, too, so that'd be good, uh, that to go forward. Katie Taggart and her husband, they have been donating their time to, uh, improve the lighting down at Austin Lincoln Park. And the Delhi Telephone Company, they donated poles and NISIG installed them, uh, so that's coming along and looking nice and improving things down there, so thankful for that. Code, who wasn't here tonight, unfortunately, was, uh, there's a problem with cars parking on front lawns. That's an issue because you have water utility hookup, uh, points that can be damaged and it's just, don't be parking where you shouldn't. In addition to that, there's been noise complaints, and he's proposed that we discuss maybe noise ordinance. The village doesn't have one. Lot more complicated than just establishing a noise ordinance, but wanted to raise that tonight. And, lastly, so last year, the village of Walton unanimously declared June Pride Month. And in recognition of that, this year, I wanted to reintroduce that proclamation and move that we adopt it in the spirit of unity and inclusivity, um, that we stand up for the LGBTQ community here in the village, full stop. So I'm gonna read this, I'll pass it out if you work. It's the same one from last. All right. Proclamation, declaring June twenty, twenty, uh, twenty-twenty-three as LGBTQ plus Pride Month in the village of Walton, New York. Whereas, the village of Walton values and respects all individuals and is deeply committed to fostering and welcoming an inclusive community. And whereas, the month of June is celebrated and proclaimed throughout the United States as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer Pride Month in commemoration of the nineteen sixty-nine Stonewall uprising, which sparked a nationwide movement for equality and recognition of the impact that members of the LGBTQ plus community and allies have had locally, statewide, and nationally. And whereas, the village of Walton joins villages, towns, cities, states, and federal government in recognizing the resilience and determination of the many individuals who continue to work tirelessly to support inclusion in communities where all individuals live freely and authentically. And whereas, the village of Walton recognizes the work of local advocates and organizations that promote the well-being of the LGBTQ plus community. And whereas, the village of Walton is committed to standing and supporting the LGBTQ plus community and working to ensure that all individuals are welcomed and treated with respect and dignity. Now therefore be it resolved that you at Snow, Village of Walton Mayor, do hereby proclaim June twenty-twenty-three as LGBTQ plus Pride Month in the village of Walton, and encourage all to celebrate Spirit of Pride Month year-round with acts of kindness and inclusion. So I move that, uh, we authorize the mayor to, to sign.
I second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Your statement?
No.
No? Okay.
I, I, the reason, I, I say that is, is it's been pointed by other agencies. You know, each month, we celebrate a lot of different things, and I, I don't think it is fair to single that out. Obviously, you know, we do respect all the individuals, as we stated in the beginning of it, but to actually say that, you know, this particular, uh, declaration, whether it be government, you know, holiday or whatever, we expect, we, we respect all those and we respect every individual within our community and we support them, but rather than single out one and ignore someone else, it puts us in a position if someone we really do object to should come here and ask for a proclamation, that we'd be obligated to do that also. I think that puts us in precarious positions. And I think that puts us in precarious position.
Well, I would just have to reply that we proclaimed it last year and the sky did not fall, so I will respectfully disagree with you.
On the list that we need three, so I'll vote to do it also. So it's three.
So you voted?
Yeah, affirmatively. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Okay, Dick, you have a report? You got anything?
Other than, yeah, on the police issue, no. We were down to three officers and one left, but we have just two officers patrolling now. And again, I know I talked to Joe and Joe has some ideas, we'll get into an executive session, how we can, you know, try to start replacing some of our officers. It's unfortunate that, you know, the sheriff took one of our people, but that is, that's the system we're living with today. It is very difficult to get police at any time. And at this particular time, it's very hard. And what's happened is one police department will steal an officer from another police department and everybody's short all the time. And we're finding ourselves in the same position. Unfortunately, as a result of that, we cannot offer twenty-four hour coverage. And there's really nothing, it's not the chief's fault, it's not the board's fault, that's just, that's the way it is today.
It's tough, I mean, me being a retired detective myself, it's, times have changed. With all the disrespect that a lot of the police are getting throughout the country, a lot of people don't want to go in and do the job anymore. You can't blame them because look on TV and you see what's going on, they're going into these stores with trash cans and they're filling up all the stuff and all over the country. So it's kind of tough and I understand that. But we're going to try and I spoke to the sheriff about it. I didn't blame him, I just said he understands that because of the salary differences there, everybody's scavenging, taking from one another and it's not good. So I suggested to him to speak to the legislature, to get down and come up with a basic price for all officers when they start. And if they live in a city or someplace like that, maybe they get a cost of living increase. But if you had a basic salary for everybody, maybe this would cut back on everybody stealing from one another. And so he agreed and he said he would look into it, but until then, we have to deal with whatever we can do and do the best we can. So that's all my input on that comes. As far as my report, I got a couple of things to bring up. I don't know if we mentioned in public, but the town has offered some of their COVID money that they had to, to help put a walking trail down on Water Street. Up to a hundred thousand dollars. We didn't vote on anything yet, but they put out a bid, LaFever is offered to do, it's about fifteen hundred and seventeen hundred and fifty-eight feet around. I guess it's like a third of a mile. They're going to put Crusher Stone down on it, Blue Stone down on it, and that'll make it really hard to walk on. If they want to do more, maybe there was a fencing that we'd like to do on the top with the railing that, so it would prevent the cars to come down. We'll talk more on that, but as of right now, that's what the town wants to give us. I spoke to the attorney, our attorney, and he said there was no, he doesn't have an issue with that. I just need a motion from the board to, that we can accept that.
Sir, I make that motion.
Second? All favor?
Aye.
All, carry. The next thing, oh, I'm sorry. I had a couple of requests. The next thing, I had a letter here from Patty Wood. Dear Ed and the Village Board, just go back to me, we would like to do a July cruise this year for the soldiers that are going to be at the IRT event, which is going to be in July twelfth to the sixteenth. They're going to come up to the, huh?
It's going to be for two weeks.
Yeah, oh, two weeks longer. They're coming up to the school, they're going to do dental, they're going to do eyes, they're going to spay dogs and cats and things like, so at no cha, at no, I can't, I don't know what the word is. At no fee. I don't want to say just the other thing. So that's, this is part of what she wanted to do. The day would be July fifteenth at six thirty PM with the lineup at the fairgrounds. Turn left onto Bridge Street, across the bridge, right onto Delaware Street, up Route Ten, Ice House Turn, loop around and back down to Delaware Street, right on Prospect and loop and back on two oh six and back down to Delaware Street. Turn right onto light at Wayne Bank, across the bridge on Stockton Avenue, up the hill to two oh six, turn around, back down to two oh six and turn left to the school. The cars will park in the parking lot near the tennis courts for a cruise in. The regular cruise day, the regular cruise will take place August twelfth at six PM and follow the same road, except one come back to Packing Heat. I don't know if you want to request this type of vote, yes, I will, I'm sorry. We're also going to ask the Lions for the duty insurance, which I'll take care of. And that's Patty.
Make the motion.
Make a motion?
Eric, you made the motion, I'll second.
All favor?
I would point out one thing, we don't have the police. We're going to have to either bring in people on overtime or get somebody else to do it. We're not going to be able to cover these intersections.
Is that something volunteers could do?
Give it a fire please.
If I've got some fire please.
Fire please can do it, yes.
Have you worked with Steve?
Yeah.
And we covered Memorial Day.
I think we do.
I mentioned that to Patty, she says she would ask. Thank you.
What time is it? I'm sorry, what time is it?
I'll give you a copy.
Oh, yeah, I'll give you a copy. Thank you. The next thing to the village, the Walton Village Board, this letter is to ask the Walton Village Board to waive the yard sale permit registration process for the weekend of July fourth to include Friday, June thirtieth through Saturday, July second. Many people look forward to the Villagewide Yard Sale Weekend. People like to host their own sales and community members and visitors from far NY like to spend the day shopping the sales. In past years, the Walton Chamber has fully sponsored this event, but for the last five years, it has been organized by Tara Biddy, Patty Wood, and myself. Both Patty and Tara sponsors of this event and they would fully support it. Tara and Patty have always helped promote the event through Walton Chamber Facebook page. This event is not sponsored by any specific organization, but we know that if an event that should continue, we have taken it to ourselves, taken it on by ourselves to keep this event going. If any group or organization would like to sponsor this event and turn it into a fundraiser, please reach out to Tara Biddy, Patty Wood, and myself sincerely, Christine Noonan. Need a motion in favor of what to do with?
I motion.
Second? All favor?
Aye.
Okay. The, okay, the last thing, as many of you know, down we, on Third Brook, there's a bridge over there by Lactalis. We had signed the contract with Casco Watershed two years ago. And to get their support, money and everything, as long as we do it. The two years is up. They're close to getting ready with everything, DOT has had a lot of issues they had to go through. So I got a call from, they asked us to extend the contract for one year. We, I'll put up something on the letterhead that'll say we agreed to extend the contract for one year, this way we can have time to complete the bridge. We need a motion for that.
Make a motion.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, who seconded it?
I think Dick made the motion, I think he beat me to it by a hair, so I'll second, I'll second.
Okay, that's, that's it for that.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, I forgot. The, for Linda Belmont and Allison Clark to volunteer to teach swing lessons, do we need a board motion for that? To be able to do that? Jody?
Yes.
Yep.
I'd like to motion for Linda Belmont and Allison Clark to be able to volunteer to teach swim lessons at the end of summer. Second?
All favor?
Aye.
All right.
Brian said there was a third person, no, Lori Fisher, does that name Lori? Marty, but it's not on there. She was teaching summer lessons in Sydney, but she would do something here if the time was right.
He said he wasn't sure if she'd be able to.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good. Okay, moving on to the next thing, the.
Did you want to formally get a motion to renew?
Oh, to renew the, huh? I think with the police for the help. I guess I'll read it. We have a memorandum of understanding with the Behavioral Health Center and the village with the police, when they have sometimes people that have to be taken to Binghamton or places like that, so we have an agreement that we signed. Memorandum of understanding is between the Delaware County Mental Health, DCMHC, and the Village of Walton Police Department, WPD, and the purpose of implementing mental hygiene law nine point four five. Whereas, nine point four five provides that the director of the community service or director designated shall have the power to direct or remove any person within his or hers jurisdiction to a hospital or comprehensive psychiatric emergency program. If a person responsible for, or a licensed person responsible for that person care reports to him or her that such person has mental illness for which immediate care and treatment in such a facility is appropriate and which is likely to result in a serious harm to himself or herself or others. Once the decision is made, it shall be the duty of the authorized police department to take into custody and transport any such person. Whereas the DCMHC is located in the village of Walton, there are no other facilities within the confines of the village of Walton that provide services to patients of the DCMHC. If while another facility within the village limits, the DCH will utilize the procedure on the MHL nine point four five for such a patient. Also routinely utilizes MHL nine forty-five to have patients who are in, who are a danger to themselves or others transported to an appropriate facility. The WPD is contacted to transport the patients. This place is financially burdened on the local police department. We are too. Whereas, in an effort to minimize the costs to the WPD and the DCMHC, we will reimburse the Walton Police Department for mileage and salaries expended for the transport. The DCH will be billed quarterly, the annual amount is not to exceed two thousand dollars. In the event that the patient being transferred per servant to nine forty-five from the village resident, DCM will not reimburse for the cost of any transport. If there is a dispute about the patient's residence, the address, the address used by the patient or maintenance, but it will be determined by the patient's residence. Whereas this memorandum of understanding shall be effective for two years from the date signed. So I need a motion to approve this.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All favor? Again, this is only, you vote, Dick, no. Oh, okay, sorry, he, yeah, this is only if we have, we're limited with police right now, so, I mean, there's no way I'm going to take the police off to transport someone like that and someone to take a chance of someone else being injured in the village. So if we do have the people at that time, we will. Okay, the next thing is the nineteenth annual four age duck race. Cornell Corporation Extension of Delaware County would like to request your permission to hold the nineteenth annual four age duck race on Saturday, July twenty-second at the village of Walton. We plan to hold a four age duck race in Third Brook. Ducks will float from the Ogden Street Bridge to formerly Robinson Brothers Auction Barn. Volunteers will be in the Brook to retrieve any stuck ducks along the way at the race conclusion. Volunteers from, excuse me, throughout the county and forest clubs will be selling the adopted ducks to raise money to help support the Delaware County four age program. Please contact us with any questions or concerns. Thank you for your proposals. Emily Roach. So need a motion for that?
Motion.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
I have some free duck.
Okay, next thing is the homecoming parade. Good morning, I hope this email finds you well. I have just received news that our athletic department wants to have homecoming on nine twenty-three twenty-three. The parade route would be our traditional one, the bus garage down Main Street, right on Bridge Street, left on Stockton, right on Maple, left on HSNS parking lot. Would you be able to provide any application? We will be, would be able to apply any application at your convenience. Also request insurance certificate from the business department. And that's Katie Quinlan. Need a motion for that too.
Make a motion.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
All right.
Make sure she gets a copy.
Yeah. You got a copy of this, right? Okay, I guess I'm going to do a little reading today. Next thing is the RSS lease from theater. Walton Theater Leash, you know, dear mayor of Snow, I am writing to advise the village of Walton that RSS desires to renew its current lease dated July one, two thousand and six with the village for the theater when the current lease expires June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three. We have greatly enjoyed our tenancy in the theater. We are grateful that the theater represents not only a highly valued entertainment venue to the community, but also provides a meaningful employment for our clients. We desire to continue the lease terms as they are, except for the adjustment for rent. The agreed upon renewal lease was for three years beginning in two thousand and twenty-one. The agreement for the rent to be adjusted annually at two percent. This would be a year three and the monthly rent would be one thousand fifty-seven forty-one. Please contact me to specify any renewal lease terms. And Jane Francisco.
I'll make a motion to renew the lease. Second.
All favor?
I, I think we should look to our insurance costs to quit the jobs.
Yeah. Talk to her about it. Jody, want to see?
What's that?
The insurance costs went up a lot too?
Eight percent.
Nightmare.
Yeah.
So we'll, we'll talk to her about that too. Okay, next thing is the budget amendments. I think you've all, I hope you all take a look at it. Do you have anything to say to that, Jody, or you just go ahead?
No.
Make a motion. We accept the amendment.
Second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Close. I believe that's it, we're going to go into executive session for police, right? Anything else that I'm missing?
Did you get the message on master switches for your?
Uh, Linda, I'm sorry, what?
I wondered about the auction, the real estate tax auction, is that going to happen? Sometimes happens in New.
Oh, for the foreclosure, you mean?
Yeah, the county had theirs.
We even, our attorney was, took forever to get it done, we're still, we've been waiting for the judge, we're waiting for the judge to get back with us, with an email, we didn't hear anything today, right? I spoke to the attorney, he said the judge should have got back to us soon as we are, we'll make a note.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead, make the motion.
I make a motion to go into executive session to discuss.
Second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks.
Jody, just a second. So I think you're supposed to get things in order prior to something, as far as what they want to do and kind of all in here. That's that is the last thing.
I didn't know you had it ready to get, I thought you were going to mail it, so that's why I just.